All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, September 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And as usual, in accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. Hey, Alan, can you hear my mic? My mic is on. I'm not muted. Maybe I just turned a little bit or something. I apologize. Anyhow, if you want to join us, you can go on the county website and get instructions on how to join us, either by phone or by computer. And with that, I will call me in order and ask everybody to join me in salute to the mic.
... of the United States of the Union of Public or we call it one way.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Laura, we have a roll call.
You're not muted?
No, I'm not muted. Have fun.
Alan Bonzio.
Here.
Thomas Mulder.
Present.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neill.
Here.
Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Melanie McCaver.
Here.
Like, we have a full house. All right. Thank you, Laura. Welcome, everybody. Director, do we have any agenda modifications tonight?
We have no modifications to the agenda. There are some recent correspondence that has come in. There's emails that were received for several of the items. So let's go through and read them all.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll come to public comment. This is time when anybody can speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. With that, looks like we have one hand up. Public 7108, go ahead.
Hi. Good evening. I had some general questions about action summaries and wondering what the purpose of them is. Some of them that I looked at, it seemed like the information on what was decided at the planning commission meetings, because sometimes the staff report comes in and they have all these conditions after you guys talk about it, you decide, no, we want to change this and change that. And I'm wondering if that's supposed to be in these action summaries or where is the record of what was actually approved by the planning commission? So hopefully, somebody can answer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Director, would you like to take that question?
Sure. There's a first want to make clear there's a difference between minutes and an action summary. An action summary merely represents the actions that the planning commission has taken. The where conditions or findings are modified, those are reflected in the resolution. That is the document that reflects the formal action by the planning commission.
Director? Did that answer your question, Bonnie?
Not really, because where is that record? Say, somebody comes in and they're proposing to have three wells, and then during the meeting, it says, well, actually, we're going to get it from this water district. And should that be reflected in the action summary?
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you. So that's the importance of the resolution.
Recording in progress.
Taken by the planning commission. That's why the resolution also reflects the action. It reflects the motion, the second, the vote. It reflects all the findings that were made by the planning commission in taking action on an item. And attached to the resolution are all the conditions that the commission has imposed, including any conditions that were added or modified. The resolution is not a staff document. That is the planning commission document. That's the formal document of the planning commission's action.
And where is that available on the web or something?
Yeah, you can go into Exella and go in under the project number, and the decision packet or resolution will be listed there, and you can pull that up and download that.
And so what's the action summary for? If the real actual what was decided is in this resolution, what's the purpose of the action summary?
To simply represent the things that happened at the meeting and the actions that the planning commission took.
That's supposed to be in the action summary?
Yeah, that's why it's called a summary, though. It is not a it is not formal minutes.
Okay. I guess anything close to the minutes would be the resolution. Okay, I'm still not clear, but oh, maybe get some more clarification later when we get to a particular item.
Maybe go to the website and look at the resolutions, then you'll see what happened, if there's a particular project that you have concerns about or anything like that.
Yeah, I had just thought that the action summary was a summary of the actions that were taken at the meeting, but actually, they're not. There are some of them, but some basic ones have had changes that aren't reflected there. So I just thought they would have more accurate information in actions. Okay, thanks for trying to answer my question.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other public that wishes to speak? I see a couple panelists have their hands up, so I'm not sure. Noah, go ahead, and then Mike after him.
Yeah, if there weren't any other public waiting to speak, I just thought I would ask a follow-up to Bonnie's comments. And I, first of all, I thank you, Director and Chair, for, you know, allowing some back and forth to try to get to that. And I do understand the difference between the resolution and the action summary, and action summary not being minutes. But that said, what would be, would it be practical, I guess, to try to include a brief summary of the additional conditions that are attached to our decision? Because, you know, in the majority of cases, we approve a project as recommended, as conditioned by staff. But in some cases, we do add a condition or two. And I guess I'm sort of asking, you know, the question that Bonnie asked, it would be practical if we could go back and see that reflected in the action summary? Are there issues with that and getting too specific or not specific enough to try to put something like that in the action summary?
Director?
We can take a look at that and attempt to do that. There are some limitations with the software that we use, but I'm not sure that it prevents us from doing that. So we will endeavor to make sure that that's done.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike Newman, you had your hand up.
I was just going to ask the exact same questions that Noah did, so I would enjoy seeing those little bits in there of any actions that are done deviating from the recommendation.
All right. Thank you. And now, since I didn't close public comment, I'll ask, is there anybody else who wants to speak on public comment? If not, I'm going to close public comment now, and we'll move on to item number E, the consent agenda. And as you can see, you had to ask for it, Mike, for all these summaries, so we got lots of them, two pages worth. So I would ask, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is all of the action summaries?
I would make that motion, and I would thank the staff for having acted directly on that response. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Noah. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or any questions on any of them? All right. Seeing none, I will ask. No. I will ask Laura for a roll call vote, please.
Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
Alan Bonzio.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
And Mike Newman.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. Thank you once again for getting all those to us. That was a lot of work, I know. That's why I ask. Let them have some discussion on it. Okay, this is the Director and I were just talking. We didn't have public comment on the because it was just a routine thing, but I do see a couple hands up, so I'm going to open this up for public comment. Just there's two people. One's Bonnie. Go ahead, Bonnie. You might continue on what you had to say before. There, Bonnie? Star six, done mute. Maybe she just put it up delayed. Oh, here we go.
Hi. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Bonnie.
Okay. One of the ones that I looked at and I remembered was on May 6th, it was the Chronic Creek LLC, where they said they were going to have three wells and that power would be provided by PG&E. Well, during the meeting, it was changed to they were going to get the water from the water district, and they would only be able to do outdoor until they got a PG&E hookup at a later time. So that's different than what's in this. Yeah, says water stores from three existing permitting wells. So those are two pretty different things that, yeah. Anyway, and I don't know if any of the commissioners looked at any of these or just figure the staff got it right and don't need to check. Okay, so that was one in particular that I noticed that I've had some changes, and hopefully with, you know, what's coming forward, they will put those in the action summary, make those changes. Thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next caller is Robie Tenorio.
Hi, good evening. I actually tried to press star nine a hundred times to comment before you voted, because I had a similar concern, and I was wondering how you could review and approve these 13 action summaries. I thought it would be quite difficult, because it would be difficult to determine if they are accurate and present the actions that your commission has taken. And I'd like to thank you for requesting that you you have those resolutions so that you can review them. Of course, our concerns are specifically around the storage of water, and these action summaries that you just voted to accept, they look as like they're the original project description, and there's no record of any conditions. The government code does provide that the legislative body of any local agency shall publicly report any action taken and the vote. So I'm really glad that you're going to include that resolution. I specifically remember when Commissioner Newman requested the minutes, because your commission was presented with several very complicated projects. They were kind of like several twins in a row, and it was unclear what you had already approved, and there was nothing to refer to. So I feel that having that resolution will definitely help you understand and have clarity on what you have approved, so you can go forward a little bit more clear. So that was my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for not asking for public comment before. I didn't see it when until after I was asking for the vote, I didn't see any hands up on the public. So I will be more patient next time. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment once again and come back to the commission. So we have approved the consent agenda, so that brings us on to continued public hearings. And the first one is LSK Art LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Showers Mountain Pilot Ridge area. And for the staff report.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Andell, Senior Planner, Humboldt County Planning and Building, and I'll be presenting for the LSK Art LLC this evening, and I'm going to share my screen. Let's go here. And I'm working on it here. All right. That should be up there. Okay, this LSK Art, it's in the Pilot Ridge area, and I'll start my presentation now. I'm just going to leave this screen up, because this item is a continuation of the August 5th Planning Commission meeting on the LSK Arts LLC's proposal to continue to operate an existing 13,680 square foot outdoor commercial cannabis operation. At the August 5th, 21 meeting, a public commenter, the planning and building director, and the commission raised concerns regarding the use of six generators for the operation. Commissioner Bonzio requested that the applicant or the agent describe the necessity for the six generators. The applicant nor his agent were present to respond. As a result, the project was continued to tonight, so the planning staff could secure more information regarding the generator use. On August 17th, the applicant's agent submitted an addendum to the operations plan stating that only two generators are going to be utilized for the property, one 25-kilowatt generator and one eight-kilowatt backup generator, and that the generators are used to support the cannabis operation as well as the applicant's domestic needs. The addendum also states that the applicant has a plan to install a solar generator on site. A condition for renewable energy, sorry, to be developed by January 1st, 2026, and that generators shall only be used for emergency backup purposes, has been added to the recommended conditions of approval. Also, as part of the motion to continue, the commission requested that the staff's recommended additional condition be added to the recommended conditions of approval. That condition is to require the applicant to submit a revised site plan and operations plan to reflect the additional tank storage to a total of 115,000 gallons in order to accommodate the forbearance needs as recommended in the Water Resources Protection Plan, and that Site B in the Water Resources Protection Plan, that is to be retired and restored, also be added to the site plan. That condition has been added to the recommended conditions of approval. This new information I presented does not alter staff's original recommendation to approve the project. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Rodney before we open this up for public comment?
I would just ask to unshare.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Rodney. Seeing no hands, I'm going to open this up for public comment then. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Robie Tenorio, please. Go ahead.
So although this farm is relatively small, it's just under 14,000 square feet, the storage is only proposed. I was surprised to see that there was two surface water diversions with no storage, because their diversion permit requires them to store water. So that's not a good sign of their operations. And of course, we feel that wall water should be stored during the dry months. I'm glad to see that they were able to adjust their project to not have six generators. I'm not sure why they would need so much generator power. It's the surface water diversions without storage is just kind of alarming, and it's the storage is proposed, it's not existing, but the cannabis is growing and existing. So and it's been five years, and in the original description, it said no storage. And then I guess after the last hearing, they got some storage in, because you received a letter August 17th saying that they now have 15,000 gallons in storage. And just as far as going back to the action summaries, this was listed on your August 12th summary, not your August 5th. So that if they just put those tanks in, that means that they filled them at the end of August. So that's concerning. No explanation is really given about why so much electricity from the generators was needed and why they changed it. And I think four years to develop a solar system is a bit lenient, and I'm not really even sure what a solar generator is. That's my comments. Thank you.
Next caller is Elizabeth. Star six, done mute.
My first time zooming. I'm not really sure what I'm doing. I feel that we should not have you politicians making these decisions on this unsustainable practice of our environment. We need scientists in, we need hydrologists in, all these wells that you're permitting and water diversions, they are really affecting the water table. The creeks have been drying up since 2015. I have seen the creek rise before any rains, like after the black box season is over. I think the practices of allowing so many wells permitted and marijuana grows permitted is devastating to the long-term local community. It's unsustainable practice. And, oh. Yeah, and a lot of these interests, there's, I live on Chinaman Road, I'm not really sure what proposition you're talking of right now, but I know it's on the agenda. Yeah, I'm sorry, not good talking publicly. Yeah, it's just these practices are unsustainable. And, yeah, the people that are having these cannabis grows, they are investors from the country of India, based out of Chicago, based out of anywhere, they are not local people. They are here to just rape our environments, or like Charles Horowitz coming in with Maxim. They're going to profit as much as they can and leave us in a devastated state. I want scientists making these onboard, making these decisions, not just the politicians. My voice is minimal compared to $150,000, you know, permit, you know, cost per permit. My voice is minimal, but if enough of us local people speak out, hopefully you'll listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this project? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. All right. Peggy, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I'm a little suspicious anytime I see surface water and wells, because I just have not had the success with wells that these cannabis growers have. And I think that we need to encourage water catchment on every project, and if it's not there, it should be a condition, because if the well doesn't produce, and they often stop producing, or they're not producing adequately, they're going to divert. If someone's not there to watch, they're going to divert. And so I think that, you know, I kind of agree with the last speaker, I want to go on record saying I'm not a politician, but I do agree that, you know, we need to encourage more water catchment and less uses of wells.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. Anybody else have comments on this? All right. Thomas, you got your hand up?
I don't know. I have some brief responses to some of the comments, because I feel like the last commenter had a lot of generalizations. I did hear, I have the, Robie, I think that's her name, and I heard some really good concerns from her, as far as the diversions, but then I was reading back through the project, and I saw that there is a well, as there's also a well, so hopefully that is what filled the storage rather than the points of diversion, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe if there's some sort of water budget, and if, you know, being as the points of diversion, they can only, unless the well is providing enough water, some sort of condition, I don't know what's going on there. But the one thing, I was reading through this, it's a pre-existing cultivation, so I believe that's included in the SEQA document for the original baseline. As Peggy said, I'm not a politician, I actually volunteer my time, I take zero pay to do this, so I take offense to that. And then the other part that really bothers me is hearing that there are a lot of these cultivators that, yes, there are some places that are investor-based, there's a lot of families just trying to get by and make a living, provide a living for their families. So may call me biased, I mean, I don't know personally on this project, but just making a general statement, I take offense to that. So there's a lot of families that are, you know, just trying to make their best, and those are my comments right now.
Great. Thank you, Thomas. Noah, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I had also been, I had a question I wanted to ask the staff about this one, since it does mention the two surface water diversions, which have now been discussed by Commissioner O'Neill and the callers. I'm curious if these are subject to forbearance. It seems to me that they must be, but could you explain the terms of forbearance that they're subject to?
I'd be happy to do that, and I'd also like to clarify that there was existing water storage on site, at a minimum 15,000 gallons when their WRPP was done. I think they've added more since, and that staff has no indication that they were filling those tanks in August outside of the forbearance period. And I'd also like to point out that we are asking them to forbear from the use of the well and the two points of diversion from the months of April to October, because as I stated in my original staff report to the commission, the well is not a great producer, and I felt that it would be best that they forbear from that. And we're conditioning them to bring their water storage up to meet the entire forbearance period and fill the tanks outside of the forbearance period. the tanks outside of the forbearance period. Does that help clarify anything?
Yeah, thank you. That does clarify. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? I'd like to comment. I am I agree with what the the speakers, the points the speakers have brought up, but I also agree with Thomas that I don't like that we're lumping everybody into one, you know, bag that they're all a bunch of investors from out. There's a lot of people that are just locals that are trying to make a living do this and doing this. And I agree that it's not fair to to try and put that picture out there that it's all that. And that's definitely out there and I and I'm against that. You know, the illegal grows and such, but I think it's fair to note that that not everybody needs that mold, so. I think it's a good point that Commissioner Mulder brought in. All right. So what's the feelings from the commission? It's sound like anybody has any more questions? Anybody like to make a motion on this one or have some more thoughts?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Noah.
I'm I'm satisfied with the latest answer from Rodney that I I think the water situation is acceptable for my concern. So I move that we find the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative deck for the Commercial Medical Marijuana Land Use Ordinance as described by Section fifteen one six four of Sequo Guidelines. We make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit and adopt the resolution approving the LSK art LLC conditional use permit and special permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
All right, thank you, Noah. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Thomas. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask Laura for a roll call vote, please.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Melanie McGaver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. The motion carries unanimously. All right. So so now we're moving on to item number F, which is new public hearings. And the first project up is the Ryanairson parcel map subdivision and special permit in the McKinleyville area. And I'm the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Steve Blazarek, the assigned planner for this project. I'll share my screen. So before you tonight is a tentative map for a minor subdivision in the McKinleyville area. The the property is Beth Ryanairson and the property is located on the east side of Central Avenue. You can see this is Babler Road highlighted in green. And it also is accessible through Grace Avenue. There were the parcel that we're talking about tonight was created through a prior subdivision that was approved several decades ago. Here's you can see a satellite image showing the location of the property and the other parcels from that subdivision. So we're dealing with a subdivision of a property that's currently already developed. Looking at the satellite image, you can see here a single-family home with an attached garage and a detached shop. The parcel is accessible from Babler and great and also, like I said a moment ago, from Pickett Avenue and Grace. For purposes of meeting subdivision requirements, Pickett Road and Grace Avenue are fully improved with sidewalk curb and gutter and two travel lanes and meet the the requirements of subdivision ordinance. This section shown in green here is from the prior map and has the necessary right-of-way width. So this is a division of a one point three acre parcel into two parcels of roughly two thirds of an acre each. As I mentioned, the property is already developed with a residence garage and detached shop. Included with the subdivision application is a special permit to allow for the conversion of the shop ahead of the parcel map being recorded and the conversion would be into an accessory dwelling unit that would exceed the twelve hundred square foot limitations applied under state law. This would enable kind of build out ahead of the subdivision being completed. The subdivision project includes a number of exception requests as provided for under the subdivision regulations. One is to eliminate a ten-foot public utility easement from being added to the parcel. Another is to allow for a reduced right-of-way width. The right-of-way for Babler in this area is a forty-foot right-of-way from the prior map. And also to allow for a waiver of the requirement for sidewalk curb and gutter. The parcel is zoned residential single-family. It is planned for densities of one to seven dwelling units per acre with a residential low-density land use designation. We have received a number of public concerns about the project. There was two comments received prior to the packets being mailed out and they were included as attachment five of the staff report. The concern centered around the Babler Road in terms of its narrowness, the additional traffic that would come with the subdivision. Some some frustration about past lack of maintenance and 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 also the lack of improvements to Babler Road that are that would occur under the proposed subdivision. There was also concerns raised about localized drainage issues. It's important to note that the property, this diagonal line that you see is a remnant of the former Humboldt Northern Railroad. So there's a railroad berm that still exists in this area that kind of divides local drainage, so the parcel kind of is separate from those. Nevertheless, a drainage report will be a requirement post, should the map be approved tonight. That will be a necessary component of the supplemental and any new development that is done on either parcel created would be subject to compliance with the MS four requirements for the for this McKinleyville area, which and and lastly, the there was some question about our use of a Sequo exemption. And we believe that the Sequo exemption is appropriate. There is an exemption one five one three eight for projects that are consistent with prior with where an EIR was prepared as as part of a community plan or a general plan. In this case, both the the recently adopted Humboldt County General Plan from twenty seventeen had a program or an EIR that was adopted as well as an EIR that was adopted during adoption of the community plan from McKinleyville. So staff is recommending conditional approval of the project and that the Sequo exemption be utilized in in that in making all the required findings for approval. We also recommend that three of the four exception requests be approved. It's important to note that the sidewalk requirement is not supported by the Land Use Division of Public Works. And we recommend that you adopt the resolution approving the project recommend, subject to the recommended conditions, including those found in the Public Works memo. We have provided several alternatives. Alternative one would be to include allowance for waiving the sidewalk requirement. Alternative two is one that we develop with Public Works in anticipation of tonight's hearing, and that is to in lieu of a sidewalk, provide for five feet of additional paving. In it, so this would be in addition to the twenty-foot right-of-way, five five-foot paved strip. There are some utility poles in the area that would be have to be negotiated around and doing any additional paving, but but essentially this would provide some additional width of paved area for pedestrian use. And then the last alternative would be to approve the project either with the paving or with the sidewalk requirement or without and not approve the special permit for the accessory dwelling unit. We don't recommend that alternative because it really doesn't change that at the end of the day, these if both parcels are created, they can both be developed with homes. So we see the accessory dwelling unit as not really being a major major issue. So with that, I'm gonna wrap it up for now. There's a number of other items on the agenda. I didn't want to go into too much detail upfront, but it I'm certainly welcome to ask questions and I'll be happy to try to answer. And Bob Bronckel from Public Works can better talk to some of the right-of-way concerns regarding that.
All right. Thank you. Mike, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I had a question. I I think it's regarding option two about some pavement. I see in our packet towards the end, just before I think it's attachment four. There's some pictures in there with some writing on it with hash lines and pave curb exempt and that sort of thing. Is that what that is all about? Option two, Steve?
I'll take a stab at that. That actually is more referencing the utility poles that exist that make it difficult to widen the road. In lieu of widening around the poles, there's a sort of a sort of an island that would be created in those cases where because the the idea being don't promote traffic driving down the road and then suddenly encountering a guy wire or utility pole. So give it a little bit of a berth, essentially. That is not the five-foot, that is not the five-foot concept that I was discussing. That would be beyond those Sharpie lines, essentially. It would be an additional five feet beyond. Those Sharpie lines essentially indicate the twenty-foot right-of-way enlargement that would come with the frontage improvements as part of the project.
Oh, that's part of the regular part of the project that's being recommended.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna open this up for public comment then. Is anybody who wishes to speak on this project? Anybody who wishes to speak on this project? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment. Bring it back to the commission. Any thoughts on this one? I'd like to comment then. Oh, Melanie, your hand came up, but I started speaking, so I'm gonna go ahead with this time. From what I can see, I didn't go out and look at the the site, but what I can look at this road, it doesn't look like to me there's gonna be a whole lot more development happening here. There are some bigger parcels, but my guess is the majority of them won't won't develop. So I I can't see, and there is no sidewalk anywhere within side if you look at any of them that. So I think it's just ridiculous to require any sidewalk on an area that isn't gonna have a whole bunch of infill or projects happening, you know, in the near adjacent to it, I should say. So I I would definitely think we should stay away from that. A little bit of fading that maybe is a good idea. Moving power poles. It's, we hear all the stories about PG&E. It's it's is that bad and I would guess to move that power pole would probably make the job not feasible to do. I, the last power pole I had to move cost me thirty thousand dollars, so and it had to move four feet, so I can tell you it's a very expensive proposition and unrealistic to ask of an applicant when they're trying to do what they need more than anything, and that's some housing. So with that, I will let Melanie speak.
I I agree with many of the statements that you just made. I wanted to comment and ask a question as well. So I I also agree that sidewalks are unnecessary there. And I like the idea of paved side part, but I'm just not sure that it needs to be so wide as to entail the the movement of a pole. And I was wondering if there were any alternatives examined that allowed some width in terms of pedestrian access on the side of the road that did not entail moving a power pole?
I'd like to have the deputy director, Bob Bronckel, speak to that.
Bob Bronckel, Deputy Director, Public Works Department. On good evening, on small, narrow, local roads, it's not uncommon to go ahead and have pavement widen and narrow to go around utility poles to provide additional pavement for both vehicular and non-vehicular travel. The intent with any of the options that the planning commission might consider tonight is not to require the relocation of utility poles as Commissioner Bongio has pointed out, they're extremely expensive to move and unnecessary for overall traffic safety and making something that would work for the community. Public Works believes that approving the project as conditioned with the exception request for eliminating sidewalks is more than adequate based upon the way the road is currently developed.
Okay, wonderful. Then that satisfies my question. And so my final comment is that I'm in favor of approving this project without the condition that it have a side.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion? Nobody else?
I'll wait and see if anyone else has a comment first.
Thomas, you have your hand up.
So I just have a couple of questions. I'm looking through the back, the zoning section in the the first part of the staff report, I thought the current zoning had said it could have one to seven houses or units per acre. So I just want to clarify with this question, if this is granted, would it be limited to an ADU and one single-family resident per parcel? Or is there a possibility of getting like four units in one of those parcels? Because it the traffic part is my question, piggyback because what the answer is.
Ronnie, could you answer that? Okay, I mean, Steve, that's I'm sorry. Wrong.
Through the chair. Yeah, so the the build-out for the the two parcels, should they be created tonight, would be a primary unit and an accessory dwelling unit. Because they're residentially zoned, state law also allows for a junior accessory dwelling as well. So that really is the the three units with variable sizes, but generally junior accessory dwelling units are five hundred square feet or less. But three units per parcel would be the peak density that could be achieved absent absent further subdivision.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I
No.
I have mixed emotions about our chair. Can I finish that a piggyback question?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yes.
I have for me, I I know we need housing and stuff like that. This isn't my neck of the woods, but I have mixed emotions about developments with power poles. Like I'm I would be okay with the ADU and doing like moving forward, but if there's going to be three units on each parcel eventually possibly, then maybe some condition that that pole needs to go underground or moved or something. I I'm just trying to think happy medium for the amount of traffic that's gonna be on that roadway, potentially. But also promote developments. Those are thoughts and I'm not married to either either one, just thoughts.
Thanks, Thomas. Noah, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to be clear because I thought maybe I had missed something, but then when you, because you mentioned the moving of a power pole, but then Mr. Bronckel, I think clarified that in the project as recommended, there is no recommendation to move a power pole. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
No power poles are to be moved or relocated this part of the project as conditioned.
Okay, just wanted to be clear about that because that would be a, you know, a heavy lift for this size subdivision. And then if we do choose to the alternative that expands the paving area by five feet in lieu of a sidewalk, that wouldn't impact or that would not in lieu of a sidewalk, that wouldn't impact or that would not force the requirement to, I mean, that would add some expense, but that wouldn't force the requirement to move a power pole, would it?
With either option, there are ways to go ahead and design it that would not require removing or relocating a utility pole. That's the primary factor in making sure that the project is doable and not a deal breaker for the applicant. While I do have the microphone, I do want to suggest that the maker of the motion clarify what exception requests, perhaps the entire slate of exception requests are also being considered for approval as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts on this? If anybody would like to make the motion then?
I can make a motion. I'd like to motion that the planning commission has, finds that the project, Ryan Airson Parcel Map Subdivision, application number PLN 20216308, is exempt from environmental review under the section 1513 of the CEQA guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the parcel map subdivision, including the exception request to allow a reduced right-of-way, waiver of a 10-foot utility easement dedication and special permit authorizing construction of an accessory dwelling unit exceeding 12 feet. And adopt the resolution approving the Ryan Airson project subject to the recommended conditions with the specification that what we are approving is alternative two and that we make all of the findings that are required to approve the modified version of this project under alternative two.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll go ahead in a second.
Need further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Oh, Mike, I see you came up late. Go ahead. You're, you're muted, Mike. You're muted. There you go.
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to raise my hand first and foremost and then unmute. But so option two is to add five feet of paving on the one side where this parcel is. Is that correct?
It's in lieu of a cement sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we need to do that. I, I would not move for this motion. I think without that, this is not that well-driven and, and that. I don't think we need to put the extra five feet of concrete and add that in there. I think the, the way that it is right now is fine with this, this change. So I would not move for the motion as it is.
To not require concrete?
I would just do it as staff recommendation.
Well, no, staff recommendation.
They recommend concrete.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I thought that was an option. I thought that was an option too.
Option two would simply add five feet of pavement rather than curb gutter and sidewalk.
And I didn't think that was part of the regular recommendation.
The recommendation is to install curb gutter and sidewalk.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So then I would be in favor then. I, I would even say we don't need to add the pavement in there as part of the recommendation.
Well, that, we have a motion that says with the paving. I mean, if the, if the maker of the motion would like to change that, that's fine. And the second agrees with that. But right now, we have a motion and a second to have the paving. And we have some further discussion. Let's hear the discussion, then we'll come back to whether we want to change our motion. Thomas has his hand up and then Peggy O'Neill also. Go ahead, Thomas.
I just want to say I'm in support of the pavement idea because the potential, there could be up to six units there. So that could be, you know, 12 people plus possibly biking or commuting in that little two partial area. So I'm in support of the paving as the, the motion states.
Yeah, thank you, Thomas. And Peggy?
I don't care about the sidewalks, but I think that they need a curb and gutter. I think that cleans it up really well and keeps some of the flooding that you might get. So I'd like to at least recommend that they have curb and gutter. And then later, when these next, you know, people come to develop these units, they could be required to put in sidewalks or different electrical at that time, right? I mean, it doesn't have to happen now. It can always happen later when they're building.
I'd agree with it. Additional things could be put on if it develops further in the future. I would not be for putting this curb and gutter there just because there's none in the area. There's no reason. It's just one more tripping hazard. And I, I, I will go along with the paving while I can see Mike's point too, that probably don't even need that. But I, I can see that having a place for a car to slide over and turn out if there's somebody coming the other way or a bike to pull off, I can go along with that. But to, to build these sidewalks that go to nowhere and never will go to anywhere because there's not going to be that much development here. It's not like there's a big field that's going to become a subdivision right next door to it or something. So I would certainly be supportive of the motion as Melanie stated it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second out there. I'd ask Laura for a roll call vote please.
Brian Mitchell?
There, Brian?
It just came across the top of my screen when she called his name, that Brian Mitchell left the meeting. I don't know if that's true or not.
Oh, just said he joined.
Back up.
Let's come back to him. Give him a second to get.
Yes.
Oh, Brian, he's on. He said yes.
I'm Mike Newman.
Oh, I, I like the project, but I don't like the paving put in there. So I'm going to vote no.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McCaber?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, the motion carries six one. All right. Thank you. So we will move on to item number two. And that is the Mark Felix Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Myers Flat area. And to the staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cliff Johnson. I'm going to be presenting the Mark Felix Conditional Use Permit and Special Permits. Just want to confirm that you can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So this is a, a conditional use permit and a number of special permits that are requested in the Myers Flat area. You can see here the project site. It's located off of Boy Scout Camp Road, approximately 400 feet off of Avenue of the Giants. Immediately to the west is Humboldt State Redwoods, Humboldt, Redwood State Park. The proposed project is 36,990 square feet of new outdoor cultivation, commercial cannabis processing, commercial cannabis manufacturing, commercial cannabis distribution, and a retail nursery. This is the proposed site plan. You can see in the center of the property, this is where the proposed retail nursery would go. This square here would be the processing, manufacturing, and distribution building. And then this gray area towards the south of the parcel is the proposed outdoor cultivation. The application was submitted on December 30th of 2016 and has generally been non-responsive to requests for information. When it was submitted in, on December 30th of 2016, there was very little that was submitted other than an application form. So we did send an incomplete letter on February 9th of 2017 requesting a number of items. We received no response. We sent a notice of intent to withdraw the application on August 16th of 2017. And we did actually receive the site plan and the operations plan that are attached to your staff report in response to that notice. None of the other items that we had asked for were submitted. And so we did send again a deficiency letter on May 7th of 2018. For the life of this application, the property here, which is just north of this line, if you can see here, has generally remained in this condition. But unfortunately, in 2021, there was an expansion of new cannabis here that was unauthorized. And they did receive a visit from the Humboldt County Sheriff and Humboldt County Code Enforcement Unit, where 24,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation was found with no light shielding, improper storage of solid waste, and recreational vehicles utilized for residential purposes. In response to that, county staff did send the applicant a letter indicating that we would be moving forward, that we didn't have enough information to review the project. And given the violation that had been occurring on the site, if they did not respond, we would be moving this forward for denial. That was sent on July 1st, giving them 30 days to respond. They did not respond. Although I will note that once we sent out the public notice for this hearing, we received a, the mail was returned, given that the P.O. box for the applicant was, was, I guess, no longer in use. We do not have any other contact information for the applicant. We did copy the property owner on all of this correspondence and have received no response. So it is our recommendation that the planning commission find that the project is not consistent with section 314-55.4.8.1, which is that all cannabis operations must be in compliance with both county and state requirements. Find that no information has been submitted to demonstrate compliance with the cannabis ordinance. Find the project exempt from CEQA. Section 15270 is the exemption for projects that are not approved and adopt the resolution that denies the proposed Mark Felix project. With that, I'm going to end my presentation and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for staff on this one? Go ahead, Thomas.
If this project is denied, does that deem this partial as not viable for another application with the same landowner, a different applicant, being as they've, in my opinion, showed non-compliance? Or is it eligible for a new application at a later date?
Thank you, Commissioner Mulder. Through the chair, I had actually made a note to mention that in my presentation and I forgot. So sorry about that. But the applicant, the project would, or sorry, the property would qualify if they chose to apply under the second cannabis ordinance. And so denial of this application would not prohibit them from, from applying. Obviously, we would still have some concerns that would need to be addressed at that point.
Thank you. Did I answer your question, Thomas?
I just had a follow-up on.
Go ahead.
The follow-up on that is just the existing, all the violations that were there if another person came in there. It just, it seems that, I don't know how to put it into words. It just, you could be the same landowner and just have a different tenant. I just, I'm trying to find ways that motivate people to follow the rules the best their ability is all.
Okay, go ahead, there.
Commissioner Mulder, one of the things that does need to be considered is that the site does need to be brought into compliance before we're going to process a 2.0 application.
Thank you.
Melanie, I see you have your hand up.
Oh, I'm just ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay. I, I need to open this up for public comments still.
Yeah, I'll wait.
All right. Thank you. So seeing other questions, I will open this up for public comments. See if anybody wishes to, to speak on this. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic or on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and I will bring it back to the commission. And now Melanie, go ahead.
All right. I'd like to motion that the planning commission has found that the project, PLN 13204 Conditional Use Permit, is inconsistent with the requirements of the CMMLU provisions of the zoning ordinance, multiple county code violations, and that we make all of the other findings listed in the staff report to deny the, and deny the application.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Peggy. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none.
I just, oh, Chair. I just have one, one quick expertise disclosure. I emailed the director and quit earlier in the week. I have an open project. It's more than 500 feet away from this, but I just want to be transparent that it doesn't affect that project according to the email, but I just want to be transparent about that.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, now Laura, I'd ask for that roll call vote please.
Melanie McCaber?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes. Motion, thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimously. So it's about the time when we usually take the break and it's good timing. We just got done with this one. So let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back and pick up item number three, Grouse Valley Farms. We'll see you in five. Okay, welcome back, everybody. The next item is item number three, Grouse Valley Farms Incorporated Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Hyam Palm area. Take a staff report.
This is Jordan Mayer with ICF. I'm the assigned planner for Grouse Valley Farms. Going to share my screen. Just to confirm that you can see that?
Yes.
This project, 2,000 square feet of existing cultivation, 3,000 square feet of which would be mixed light, and a 960-foot ancillary nursery. A new 3,000-square-foot processing building is proposed, which would be solar-powered, and a special permit for a 300-foot setback from Six Rivers National Forest to the west is included. Irrigation water is sourced from a 250-foot-deep well and a small irrigation use registration. Water storage is existing at 145,000 gallons. And, or water usage, yes, 99,000 gallons of water storage is currently available. And electricity is sourced from two generators. This is a site plan. You can see the cultivation area in the northeast corner of the parcel. And the Six Rivers National Forest is on the western boundary, which I can show you here is a Humboldt Web GIS. You can see the area is largely barren. I believe it was burned in Six Rivers. You can see the area is largely barren. I believe it was burned, and Six Rivers National Forest is to the west, and Grouse Creek Road is shown at the bottom. Just some selected conditions of approval that were included. There are ten road point corrective actions outlined in the watershed resources protection plan that are made a condition of approval. A condition for renewable energy to be developed by January first, twenty twenty-six is included, so that generator use can be discontinued. And like all projects, there's a condition to install water monitoring devices as well. That concludes my presentation. This is in the Hyam Palm area on the north, north side of National Forest Service Road six, which is known as Grouse Creek Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Any questions for Jordan? Seeing no hands, I have one question for you. I've never seen a small irrigation use registration certificate. What is that?
That is the water rights that was filed with the state, water, water rights for the state. There's also a lake and stream bed alteration agreement for the diversion.
I guess my question is what define, what makes it different than any other registration you would have on a well? So the way you worded it was small irrigation use registration certificate. Oh, that was on the, okay, I thought that was on the well.
No, it's for the divert, they also have a diversion from Grouse Creek.
Okay, maybe that's why I hadn't seen it before, because we don't see a lot of diversions. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought it was on the well, and I just have never seen that
Yep.
kind of a wording on a well before, so I just wanted some clarification.
It's with the California Water Board, State Water Resources Control Board, cannabis, small irrigation use registration.
Thank you for the clarification there. Thank you, Director. All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Jordan, and I'm going to open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Go ahead, Robie. Star six.
Okay, yeah, it's concerning that this is another well. I'm, I'm glad they have some storage, but it's forty-six thousand gallons short of what they said they will need. It's also good to see that they plan to have a solar system for their electrical use, but four years seems too long to develop that. Because as always, the concerns that we have with generators is the fire danger, and we're in an area that's considered very high fire danger, and four years is a long time, and it's the continued use of fossil fuels, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this one? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. What are the thoughts, commission? Go away. Any other questions? One hand up, Melanie. Just put your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I don't think any of us are enthusiastic about seeing diversions generally, but as we've established, we have to follow the guidelines presented to us and have limited options in terms of what we can ask for additionally. Perhaps that's why there's always a bit of a silence.
Yeah. Any else have any other thoughts?
Well, with that silence, I'd like to make a motion there, Chair.
Thank you, Mike.
I, I move that we find the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the C M M L U O as described by section fifteen one six four of state CEQA's guidelines, and make the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approved by the approving the Grouse Va- Valley Farms LLC conditional use permit and special permit as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second to go with that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Noah. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, I'll ask Laura for a roll call vote, please.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Brian, are you out there? I guess he dropped off, so the vote will carry six to, or five to one with a yes vote. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to item number four, which is GLG LLC conditional use permit and three special permits in the Denzmore area.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm also the assigned planner, Jordan with ICF. Call this one up. Just to confirm, you can see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. This application is located in the Denzmore area, on the north and south sides of China Mine Road, approximately two miles south from the intersection of State Highway thirty-six and China Mine Road. This project is for twenty-six thousand four hundred square feet of existing cultivation, seven thousand three hundred twenty square feet of which is mixed light, with approximately ten percent to serve as an ancillary nursery. There are three special permits included in this application, included the, for the need of decommissioning a stream crossing, maintenance of one water diversion, and a streamside management area setback production. Irrigation water is primarily sourced from a three-hundred-and-thirty-foot-deep well and a water rights to obtain twenty percent of water from Mule Creek, subject to forbearance, which includes absolutely no diversion of water allowed between August first and October thirty-first. There's other limitations on diversion, diverting before August, set by both the Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement and the small irrigation use registration. Water usage is estimated at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons per year. There are ninety-nine-thousand gallons of water storage currently available, and twenty-two additional water storage tanks are proposed in order to meet full forbearance needs throughout the summer. Electricity is currently sourced from two generators, and, and the applicant is conditioned to transition to solar within five years. Here's a site plan. You can see, and highlighted in yellow is where there's a solar-powered groundwater well. This is the new well that was installed that they would use for eighty percent of the irrigation needs. There is an existing well located down here, which is approximately two-hundred feet from Mule Creek. If you can see my cursor, that's to be decommissioned and sealed. And here you can see the location of the Mule Creek water diversion, which is used, you know, primarily in the winter, in my, to a minor mountain in spring to provide twenty percent of the water to fill the tanks. You can see this parcel here in Mule Creek running from west to south. And Bu Creek Road is the access point, China Mine Road to Bu Creek Road to Highway thirty-six. Here are the selected conditions of approval to highlight. Condition fifteen includes installing additional storage to allow full forbearance. Condition seventeen is to implement various corrective actions in the Timberland Conversion Report, including replanting of point one-three acres of trees located in streamside management areas. Condition eighteen includes the implementation of several corrective actions in the site management plan. And both the timber conversion report and the site management plan were conducted by Timberland Resource Consultants, and a lot of the recommendations in them are overlapping. Regardless, all of them were detailed in the staff report as individual bulleted items. Condition of approval nineteen would be to implement the corrective actions on the road evaluation report. And this includes documentation of various road widening or turnouts by an engineer on China Mine Road as it accesses the parcel. Finally, condition twenty-two requires renewable energy to be developed by January first, twenty twenty-six. That concludes the visual part of the presentation. And just going to check really quick. I know there was some comments, there were three comments from neighbors that were sent in last week that are located at the very end of the staff report. So they begin on page eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four, the last three pages of the staff report. All three of them essentially say the same thing, that they have reservations of approving projects here because the creek runs dry in the late summer, even in July. Not sure if the Commissioners have had a chance to see these items. But as I said, they're, they're largely saying that, you know, there's already approved projects in this watershed. They think that the wells are responsible for the drought conditions that have been seen since twenty fifteen. So I'd just like to point those out, make sure that they're not missed, and those, those callers or those, you know, voices were heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, let's see, Peggy, I see you have your hand up, and then Mike.
I just want to ask about the well. It's pretty good producing wells, forty-five gallons per minute. Did you say on a previous one that they can't use the well during the forbearance period? Is that applicable to this project also, or are they allowed to pump forty-five gallons a minute during the summer months?
The, I, they are allowed to use the well. It's not subject to forbearance. From my understanding, the first screening depth, which means that the first depth that water can be drawn from the well, like physically, is at a hundred-and-fifty feet. But the idea is that the applicants would obtain enough storage so that they, they could fill the, fill all those tanks using a combination of the, you know, twenty percent of the water from the diversion and eighty percent from the wells. But it, there's no condition limiting them to continue to top off wells during the summer months from, or top off the tanks from the well during the summer months.
Mike Newman, you have a question as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to be certain that I heard correctly that forbearance is from when? Is it early July? And they're supposed to have enough water in the storage for their full usage? Is that correct?
It's, it's can, it's conditioned to install enough storage to, to allow for full forbearance. The the, the State Water Resources Control Board certificate for their water rights limits their use of the diversion as well as the stream bed alteration agreement allows for no diversion of water between August first and October thirty-first.
And you mentioned something about other things before that. Was that the stream diversion by the state?
Yes, they have a, a lake and stream bed alteration agreement and a State Water Resources Control Board water rights certificate. Both exert their own limitations on when and how much water can be diverted.
So when does that start, Jordan?
The lake and stream bed agreement says that, sets limits about how much water they can draw from April to July.
And then it is measured?
That is measured. They'll have to install water monitoring on all sources, tanks, the wells, the well, and the diversion as a condition of approval and to apply, to comply with the Water Resources Control Board order.
Okay, thank you.
Thomas, move your hand up.
So I'm trying to follow this, and confused that we are, if, if approved as this is stated, would we allow diversion, surface water diversions up until August first? Because if, if so, I'm confused if that's in line with the CMM L U O.
The, the strictest conditions would, would be required, would be at the CMM L U O, the Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement, or the State Water Resources Control Board. They have overlapping dates and, and differing amounts of diversion. And, and the strictest of them would be defining the conditions set on the applicant.
Okay, because I'm just, I'm hearing that, but I'm just confused. I don't know any diversions that are allowed past May first to cultivate cannabis from surface water diversions. That's what I'm confused about.
I agree, it is converse, confusing that the C D F W's lake and stream bed alteration agreements don't often follow the water board. And that's why the water board requires monitoring. And that, the amount that can be diverted varies depending on the monitoring according to the water board. But if the CMM L U O's conditions do not require, allow surface water diversions, then that would take precedent. The date at which, go ahead, John.
Well, the C M N L U O says that it's May fifteenth unless the water board approves something different.
But in this particular condition, the lake and stream bed alteration agreement, if it says that there is no diversion between August, October, even if it was an extraordinary wet year, you know, they wouldn't be allowed to do it. But I don't think the water board would allow any diversion during those dates because of the stream flow.
Any other questions?
Can I go again? Yes. So okay, because I'm, I'm just really concerned with allowing any surface, I mean, we're hearing water concerns. We see where the rivers are at in June and July. So, and creeks and all that, so I'm, I'm uncomfortable, even if the State Water Resources Board is okay with water being diverted during that time. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with allowing that. with allowing that personally.
And so am I. That was part of my question in there that I've been hearing evolving stories there. So um May fifteenth was what I had assumed it would be at the latest for any diversion of surface water.
So uh through the chair, if I could, I you know, they do have a a pretty um well-producing well. And the typical or the forbearance requirement in the CMMLO is to forbear between May fifteenth and October thirty-first. It does set some parameters through which you can actually um have a different forbearance period, but it might be appropriate in this case to just add a condition that they they do forbear for that period, May fifteenth through um October thirty-first.
Melanie, you've been patient. Have your hands up. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um I just wanted to say that I I found that the uh reports by the this planner to be very yet concise, uh transparent. Really appreciate that. Perhaps that's why we have uh more questions. And so I have a question that is specific to this project, but relevant to all projects. And that is in regards to the water use. I I brought this up before, but it was over a year ago, I believe. And so I just wanted to check and see whether it's the case that the water projections that we are given include any dwellings that are on the property. And um in this case, they are planning to house four to six people in a, I think, a twelve hundred square foot building. But we've had many others where the applicants are living there. And the reason I ask is that the average household in California uses, I mean, the numbers vary, but it's in the order of a hundred thousand gallons a year. And so that, you know, they're planning to store everything but that. So I'm just curious to know whether the water projections that were given are strictly for the farm, or is that for the property as a whole?
Typically, it is strictly for the farm. The we do not get into evaluating the residential use because that is a from separately permitted activity and is not part of the cumulative um relative to the cannabis cultivation.
Okay, so the applicants know this when they give their projections and they're not somehow including their household use, not lumping it all in together.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that answers my my question then. And um I'm also uh willing to approve if the forbearance period were extended a little bit uh longer over the drought period.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Uh Thomas, I think your hand came back up, so. There, Thomas?
Yes, I apologize. I yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm not as prepared as I currently am for a meeting, but I'm just reading re-scanning through everything. And am I reading this correctly? They currently only use a forty-seven kilowatt generator, and this uh proposal is going to allow them to put in two hundred and twenty-five KW generators until they go to a solar array, or is that a misprint?
That is what the uh that is what the original cultivation and operations plan proposed is to to move to a a larger diesel generator until they can fully transition to solar. And they are also proposing three new solar arrays and thirty solar panels on, I believe, on the proposed building. No, sorry, that was the last application. They're using solar power for the wells and are proposing to tran to temporarily use a diesel generator and then transition to solar.
It says they're going to.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Oh, I just want I was just going to add that it does say that they plan to fully transition. I think they have eighteen thousand square feet of solar.
Thank you. Thomas, did you have something more to say? You started to speak and then got.
Yes. Yeah, yes, I got a little delay on my video. I apologize. So I might interrupt someone. I just am confused how you would allow a seventy-five percent increase if you guys are concerned about if the the community is concerned about generators, a seventy-five percent increase in generators, whereas I've seen projects that are three thousand KWs and seven or three thousand little Honda generators get conditioned to be on solar. So I'm just I'm trying to wrap my head around this.
Okay, Noah, I see your hand come up.
Uh I just was gonna say, have we have we gotten to public comments? We haven't yet.
Not yet. We're still.
Uh some of these questions might be good if we get to public comment to ask if the owner, applicants, or agent is there. That's all.
Okay. Well, is there any more questions for staff at this point? And if so, I'll move it to public comment. All right, seeing no more. I'm gonna open this up to public comment. And is there anybody? Robie, go ahead.
Okay, hi. Yeah, so our concerns are the well impacts and something to consider is this is not the only well in the area. That's why the the neighbors are concerned about the creek going dry. And I'm not certain, but I believe this year the um water board sent out a notice that cultivators had to stop diverting April first because we're in a severe drought. And I thank Commissioner McAver for bringing up the residents because when you have employees, and there's quite a few on this project, they will be living there and they will be using water. So that is something to consider. Um while I'm reading this project, I see that they plan to use two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water, but they only have proposed storage of a hundred and fifty thousand gallons. So I you could require more storage, and it sounds like the planner is saying that. The solar power, as he said, is just for the pumps, but this these two a hundred and twenty-five kilowatt generators that that seems really big. And this plan allows them to be used for another four years. So that's a concern. And another thing about the employees is when you have um employees, you have bigger impacts on the roads and um our first responders and volunteer fire departments. And I would just add that this owner applicant is listed as living in Illinois, just for the record, just so you know that. Okay, thank you.
Next caller is Bonnie, seven one oh eight. There, Bonnie?
Yes, thank you. Um I have some similar uh concerns. And the thing with the forbearance period, it should be called the forbearance period because it changes. And like Robie said, this year they bumped it up to April instead of May because of the drought conditions. So I think rather than putting a date, it should be the forbearance period that's determined by the water board and the uh current conditions. Uh the the um point of diversion probably um the water board will let people divert water longer for uh residential purposes, but not for commercial cannabis. So I would think that and the ordinance says that you need to uh forbear. So as far as the water diversion taken out of the creek, I know the creek's here now. There's nothing in them. It's, you know, August, they're all dry uh because of the drought. And this question about the well and how is it determined that it's not uh affecting any of the surface waters or uh any of the neighbors' water? So um yeah, I think that was my thing. And actually, the generators with seven thousand three hundred and twenty uh square feet of mix light along with your two thousand six hundred and forty thousand square feet of ancillary put those together and you got, I think, looks like over ten thousand square feet. It will be kind of like mix light. And I'm not sure if the outdoor is gonna be uh outdoor or uh light damp. So um yeah, the water, these generators that um I appreciate Thomas is not age on generators and what's needed. So hope you can listen to him on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next caller is Neil Patel. Star six, done you.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, hi, great. Uh I just wanted to let everybody know that uh I'm the owner on the parcel and um just like to clarify a couple of things. Uh probably starting with the mixed light generator. We're not gonna be using two two hundred and fifty KW worth of power because it's just uh it's it's too much, and we don't really even grow on that property year round. It's pretty much just it's typical season, and we're not growing there in the winter or anything like that. So we're just gonna stick with the the generator that we have there now and then just switch over to solar. So it must have just been something that was uh maybe a typo or just got kind of passed along into the operation plan. But I'm just here to clarify that we're just gonna stick with we're just sticking with the generator that we do have. I mean, the cost to even buy that a generator like that would be way too expensive, and it wouldn't even be feasible. So um yeah, we're not planning on increasing our generator usage at all. Uh we're just gonna stick with what we have and then convert everything over to solar, so there won't be um any generator usage anymore, basically. Um and also, I wanted to talk quickly about the water. Um we we do get most of our water from the well. Um and we are planning to increase storage so that way we can um um during the winter months, you know, store enough water, so we're not really taking anything as we're even able not taking as much out of the well as well. Um and then also, we don't really divert a lot from the um Mule Creek because by the time name uh the winter months go, uh it it does run dry very, I mean, typically like in July. So I mean, number one, the forbearance period ends May fifteenth uh or or so, and we don't really even take much out of it, even like between like March and February, cuz we're, you know, the well provides us enough to. It's just kind of there as a somewhat of a backup, but the majority of our water does come from the well. And when that creek runs dry, we don't our well isn't hydrologically connected because it we drilled it so deep. So um I don't think there'll be any issue as us affecting Mule Creek because we're going at an aquifer that's very deep below the creek in itself. And then lastly, I would like to clarify that I'm actually a resident of Humboldt County. I've been living here for over five years and plus I've I've also lived here from since two thousand nine. So I don't know why people are keep bringing up that you know, it we're from I'm from Illinois cuz that's where I was originally from, but I live in Humboldt County. I'm a resident here, and this is a family business. So uh yeah, I don't know why that keeps getting brought up, but I just wanted to clarify that I'm a local Humboldt resident. So you know, I don't see why that should be any issue and why people keep bringing that up.
All right, thank you for clarin- clarifying those things and hang around in case there's any questions from any of the commissioners.
Sure, definitely.
Thank you. So is there any more public comment on this project? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment. I'm gonna come back to the mission. It looks like Noah has his hand up and then Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um yeah, I'd like to thank the owner for what you clarified. Specifically about the the generators and that that being somehow uh an error that had just continued on in our report, but I'm thanks to Thomas for flagging it. Thanks to the to the uh owner also for clarifying your water use. Uh so do you have any explanation of the term that we have here that says that the forbear the that the um Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement refers to a forbearance period beginning just in August and only going from August through October? That was a question for the for the owner, Mr. Patel.
Yeah, are you there still?
Yes, um uh you know what? I know I guess there is some confusion because of the different dates, but we've always never done any um we've always stopped on May fifteenth. Uh we've never we've never ever we never even knew that we could go past May fifteenth. You know, all I ever knew is that May fifteenth is the deadline, and that's what we've always stuck to.
Uh and and I I'm again, I'm really glad to hear that because that's our understanding as well, and that's why we were concerned or confused by the it may be in fact that it's an error. So let's just let's just say that this will be conditioning that you cease um any surface water uh water diversion on May fifteenth as the normal forbearance period. Thanks. That that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks, Noah. Uh Mike Newman?
Thanks, Chair. Um I was just gonna um reiterate what um uh Commissioner Levy had just said, and also maybe um uh tell the owner, um Mr. Patel, uh take a look at his LLC cuz that's probably where this address is coming from. If he hasn't changed his address from Illinois uh to local, that's why it says twenty twelve fourteen East Cardinal Lane, Mount Prospect, Illinois. Maybe for the LLC. I'm not sure cuz I didn't look up the LLC on the Secretary of State's website as to where that all is, but that could be where the out-of-town item is coming from from the public as well as looking at the ownership here. But I I'd like to see the forbearance just as um Commissioner Levy had said, uh change um as well as then taking out the two kilowatt, two one twenty-five kilowatt generator and then the upgrade. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thoughts on this?
If it would help, I would just offer two conditions. One new condition would be that the uh applicant shall comply with the forbearance period extending from May fifteenth until October thirty-first, unless that period is extended by the state water board or CDFW. And then add a second condition that would say that the use of generators shall be limited to the for a forty-seven kilowatt generator as is existing.
All right. Thank you, Director. Questions or anything for uh Mike? I see you have your hand back up. No?
No, never took it down.
Never took it down? Okay, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Would would that uh statement about the generator also include the standard sunset language uh for when the solar array will be put in?
Well, that's in there.
That language is already existing, and so this would be in addition to that.
In addition to, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Uh any other questions or thoughts? Thank you, Director. Uh, any other questions or thoughts? Do we have anybody that would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Um, I will find that the, I move that the commission, uh, has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance as described by section one, five, one, six, four of the state sequel guidelines. Make the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the GLG conditional use permit as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions with the two additional conditions just stated by the director pertaining to the extended forbearance period and the, um, generator use. I'll second that.
Thank you, Brian. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Laura, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Termitive.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries six, one. Thank you, Laura. All right. Uh, moving on to the next item. The Dushee LLC conditional use permit in the Bridgeville area.
So, oh, we got a little over exuberant with this and we noticed it for two meetings. And the planning commission actually approved this at the last meeting.
That looks familiar.
Okay. No, no actions necessary here.
Thank you.
Number six.
Humble sunrise farms in the Bloxburg area.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you guys hear me? See my screen?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Christopher Alberts and I'll be presenting the Humboldt Sunrise Farms conditional use permit.
Can you do full screen on that?
Yes. Thank you. The proposed project is a conditional use permit to authorize nine three hundred square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation, as well as eighteen hundred square feet of existing mixed light cannabis cultivation. Processing such as drying and curing will occur on site. However, the applicant is provo, uh, proposing to trimming on site in the future once a, uh, permanent processing facility can be developed. The applicant is proposing five employees on site, whereas three would be family members and two would be seasonal employees. The energy source for the project is solar, uh, and the applicant is proposing to use a backup generator. The solar is currently on site, um, as of now. The water source for the project is an existing six hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred gallon rainwater catchment pond located on the adjacent APN, which is under the same ownership as the applicant. Uh, there is a condition on the project for the applicant to obtain a recorded easement for the use of the rainwater catchment pond. Uh, existing water storage on site totals sixty-three, uh, six hundred thirty thousand, two hundred gallons. And the applicant anticipates ninety-five thousand, one hundred fifty gallons will be, uh, needed for irrigation. The project is located in the Bloxburg area. Uh, the site is accessed Homestead Road off of Alder Point Road. This here is a copy of the applicant's site map. I'm going to go through it real quick and even zoom in a little bit. Uh, the outdoor cultivation is occurring on the north side of the parcel, as well as, uh, that's where the nursery is located. Uh, the mix light cultivation is located near the center of the parcel, highlighted in the bright green. And the, uh, rainwater catchment pond is located on the west stern parcel over here. Uh, these are some photos from a recent site visit at the site. Um, you see fire suppression, uh, photo of the outdoor cannabis cultivation, as well as a photo on the bottom, uh, right of the nursery. Staff is recommending that the planning commission find the project assistant with the made, uh, mitigated negative declaration adopted for the CMLUO. Make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, as well as adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit subject to the conditions of approval. Uh, that completes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Christopher? All right, seeing none, I will open this up for public comment then. Is there anybody public who wishes to speak on this? Could you, uh, give us back the screen? And then you did, all right.
I, I think I did.
Yeah, I'm just seeing you still. Okay, thanks. Any public who wishes to speak on this one? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment then and bring it back to the commission. All right. Any thoughts? Questions? Peggy, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a motion that we find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigation, mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance as described by section fifteen, one, sixty-four of the state sequel guidelines and make required findings for approval of the conditional use permit. Adopt the resolution approving the Humboldt Sunrise Farm conditional permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Laura, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
You there, Thomas?
Hi.
Yeah.
Was it yes?
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Ryan Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. That goes to item number seven, the Lanceberry conditional use permit in the Benzmore area. Oh, this one, excuse me, I even have highlighted, this one is already being continued. So we need no action on this one. Apologize, I had my hand over the highlight. Uh, that takes us to number eight. Platinum King Farms LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Petrolia area with the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michael Holtermann. Um, can you see and, uh, hear me? Yes. Okay, cool. Let's start this. All right. My name is Michael Holtermann and I'm the planner assigned to Platinum King Farms. That's going to be applications number one, five, one, nine, six and one, five, two, zero, zero. Uh, there are two separate applications, one for a special permit for, uh, new cannabis cultivation, uh, as well as a conditional use permit for a commercial processing facility. The other application, one, five, one, nine, six is a special permit for pre-existing cultivation. So first, just a brief overview of the project. The cultivation is, uh, for one, five, one, nine, six, twenty-four thousand, five hundred square feet of existing cannabis cultivation. That's broken into fifteen thousand, seven hundred square feet of existing mixed light and eight thousand, eight hundred square feet of existing full sun outdoor. Uh, one, five, two, zero, zero is thirty thousand square feet of proposed new cannabis cultivation that is also mixed light and, uh, as well as five thousand, four hundred and fifty-one square feet of propagation. Total cultivation for both projects is fifty-four thousand, five hundred square feet. Uh, for processing activities, they are proposing drying, trimming and packaging, as well as processing, uh, off-site cannabis at the commercial processing facility. Again, that's why we were, uh, they were applying for a conditional use permit. The energy source is PG&E. It's purchased through, uh, RCEA's, uh, Repower Plus Service, uh, to ensure that energy is one hundred percent renewable, as well as an emergency backup generator in case of power outages. Uh, their water source is, uh, a three hundred foot by one hundred foot proposed rainwater catchment pond that is estimated to be able to hold two point five million gallons, uh, as well as two existing permitted groundwater wells that have been verified by an engineer to be, uh, hydrologically disconnected from surface water. Uh, so their total proposed water storage is two million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand gallons. Uh, their total water use across both projects is projected to be one million, twelve thousand, one hundred and two gallons annually. On this slide, we can see the two parcels in question. Uh, it is accessed via Matole Road and then a private road, uh, Reynolds Road that has also been verified by an engineer to be, um, category four equivalent. On the right there, you can see it's a split zoned AE and TPZ across both parcels. Uh, and the general plan land use is, uh, AG, uh, AG and T rather, again, split. So if you see, uh, this area, this area, this area, they're all going to be cultivation. And I believe processing is going to go in this area here. Uh, so next slide, we can see the site plan, which points out all the areas that I just mentioned. Premises four on the far left, that's going to be the thirty thousand square feet of proposed, uh, mixed light cannabis. To the right on premises one, we have the processing facility. And then to the west of that is the eight thousand, eight hundred square feet of, um, existing full sun outdoor cannabis. Uh, to the south, we have on premises two, the four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one square foot nursery area. And in this parcel here on the west, we have in the TPZ area, the pre-existing mixed light cannabis cultivation, as well as over here, um, the rainwater catchment pond. So staff recommendations are to, um, find the project consistent with the final EIR for the CCLUO. Uh, make all the required findings for approval of the CUP and special permits and adopt the resolution approving the Platinum King Farms projects as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I do.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yes, just the question I was trying to look through here, um, about the requirements, um, with the one point O and the two point O and approving both of these together. Is there a requirement, um, or an easement about the water being done between the two parcels again?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, if I could direct your attention to attachment one A on the staff report, one, five, two, zero, zero. Uh, item number fourteen, I believe. I can look it up right now. I believe that addresses your concerns.
Let's see, attachment one or attachment, which one?
Uh, yes, attachment one in section A. I believe it is number fourteen. The applicant shall record a contingent easement regarding the ongoing use and maintenance of the proposed rain catchment pond and groundwater wells located on the adjacent parcel. Uh, the easement shall answer, ensure that in the event that APN one oh four, zero, seven, one, zero, zero, four is transferred to a separate ownership from the subject APN, an easement for the use of the pond and well shall be granted to the subject parcel.
Now, that is on the, um, PLN fifteen, two hundred then? Cause I'm looking at the other one there.
So, yes, it's on, uh, one, five, two, zero, zero, one, five, one, nine, six does not have that.
That helps to make that, uh, determination ahead of time. I'm trying to go through the, the two different ones here. Okay, great. Yes, now I see that. I was looking at the other one. Thank you.
Melanie, your hand up?
Yeah, um, I have more of a, a comment, although it is a question that I asked before. Uh, so for a while, we were getting the water use per square foot. Um, it's not difficult math. I don't mind doing it. It's just that I think the public might appreciate seeing it. So for example, the last project that we just approved for mixed light was using ten gallons per square foot. And this one uses double that, uh, per square foot. It's just something that I would like to see put in the summaries at least. In this particular case, it's not as concerning. Uh, it's still curious uh, because they do have a lot of planned water storage, but, uh, it is double the water usage of the last one we just created.
Noah, you have a hand up?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to ask about something that was mentioned at the end of the, uh, water resources paragraph of the staff report. It says, um, uh, it has also been determined by a licensed engineer that the wells are not hydrologically connected to a surface water as outlined in the submitted well hydrogeologic analysis. And I, uh, my question is firstly, uh, well, or just, is that attached to the, um, staff report somewhere? I didn't find it, but maybe I missed it. And can you tell us anything more about that? Because I just don't think that's, um, you know, we hear a lot about, oh, how we should get a hydrogeologic analysis of that question, but usually don't have a person who's willing to sign their name to one. So that's my question.
Um, I don't know that it is attached to the staff report. Um, we do have it on file. As far as, do you want me to kind of go over briefly what the hydrologic report is, uh, saying?
Uh, no, I, 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 it's enough that you found it to be adequate. I just, um, uh, I was curious if it was attached and if not, I can, uh, after hours, I can try to get a copy of it, I guess.
Yeah, I don't believe it's attached to the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Uh, Peggy, you have a question?
Excuse me. So what is the well production capacity of these two wells? And I didn't see it in the report, but I might've missed it.
Um, I don't believe that is in, uh, attached to the staff report either, but I do have the well completion logs. Uh, those are also on file.
I think that's kind of important information to know because they say, well, we have all this water. We don't need the wells, but everyone's looking at pictures of all the reservoirs and lake meat all dried up. So it's very possible that they will need to use those, um, wells. And so it'd be nice to know what the capacity of those wells are.
Uh, it appears that one well is, uh, has an estimated yield of three gallons per minute and the other has an estimated yield of ten gallons per minute.
So about five gallons a minute is what you'd need for a house. So it's not a huge amount, especially in the one. Ten's not too bad, but.
But any other questions, Peggy, or you done? Okay. Anybody else have any questions before I open this up for the public? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go, open this up for public comment. Anybody wish to speak on this project? Go ahead, Roby, scenario.
Okay, um, I'm glad to see that they have a big reservoir, uh, of water, but I am concerned about the wells also. And I think if they're going to be listed there, we should be able to see the information about them and, and, and who is saying that they are not hydrologically connected. But my main concern is this thirty thousand square feet of new cultivation. That's, that's just a lot of new cultivation. And after two years, they plan to convert to six harvest. So that's not really mixed light. That's basically indoor. And according to this plan, the lights will be running for eighteen hours a day through the winter. So, um, I would ask if there is a will serve letter for this project from PG&E? Because they, they may want to use PG&E, but it may not be available on this level. Um, this morning, Stephen Lou pointed out at the zoning administrator meeting that his project, uh, received the last power drop available in the petroleum area. So I'm, I'm questioning whether this, this can really be supported on PG&E. And here's, here again is another project. And here's, here again is another project with many employees, four to 12, in addition to the owners. And this is a remote rural location on gravel roads. Emergency and fire response will be an impact on our local volunteers year round. And all these employees will be driving on our roads. And it doesn't say necessarily where they're coming from. And the fact that this is new cultivation, you have a crashing cannabis market right now. I know cultivators are having their product returned from distributors. They cannot sell it. Trade organizations are alarmed about the future because there is more cannabis being produced than can be sold legally in California. And now we have an application for 30,000 year round, six harvest. That's basically another nail in the coffin of the local cannabis industry. Are you saying my time's up?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought you said stop. Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
So I just feel like this is basically permitting for the black market and I don't necessarily have a big problem with the black market, but you, but you need to be honest with yourselves that that this, this is not going to be supported and it's not helping anyone that you've already permitted. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is 7108, Bonnie.
It's only been Bonnie and I all night.
Hi.
Hi, Bonnie.
I want to second everything that Roby said. And this thing, this stuff with the wells is a really big deal in this climate change drought that we're in. And having, you know, somebody submitted a well hydrogeologic analysis, but you're not going to see it unless you do some more research. So whoever is saying that they've determined it's not hydrologically connected, we should be able to see that report and these well logs, well completion logs. They give you information, but one of them isn't whether it's hydrologically connected to other surface waters. And just because it's so deep, doesn't necessarily mean it's not affecting somewhere else. And these wells with five gallons a minute doesn't sound like a whole lot of water for this expansive, expansive grow. And how about dealing with the existing before you pile on this super grow out out in the outlands on these back country roads. So, and you do have discretion. That's what your job is, is not to rubber stamp, but these are conditional use and special permits where the planning commission gets to put in what they think is right. So I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next caller was Brett Reinhardt.
Hello, my name is Brett Reinhardt. I'm a licensed civil engineer with Reinhardt Engineering and I'm the consultant for this project. And I was here to answer any questions and I can comment on the questions that have come up so far. The staff reports do include the well completion reports and the hydrogeologic analysis. On the 15200 staff report that's found on 70 and on the 15196 that is found on page 80. In regards to the 19 gal, the, the water usage per square foot. We went with 19 based on the owner's experience and based on just being conservative. We, our goal with this project was to ensure there was plenty of water and that water wasn't ever in short supply. Let's see, regarding the PG&E service, there's, this is a, this is a project that's been in place for a long time. And there's an existing 400 amp, 480 volt, three phase service onsite, which lends itself well to this type of project and to the, and to the request to have a commercial processing facility onsite. Let's, and I'm here for any other questions as well.
All right. Thank you. Just hang around. Any other public wishes to speak on this? Holly Hall.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Holly.
Thank you for your service. I appreciate it greatly. I just want to comment that projects like these that may seem appear to use a lot of water, however, are designed to capture two and a half million gallons of water from the sky and then to use wells as backup are resilient in terms of economics and the environment and that we should support these projects that are not dependent on surface water diversions and that are being developed with environmental sound in mind. And yeah, I think that that is my main point here is that we are seeing a project with ample rainwater catchment and storage capabilities and backup groundwater supply. And these are really the type of projects we need to see more of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public wishes to speak? See, and then I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. And I see Noah has his hand up.
Yeah, just really briefly to follow up. I appreciate Mr. Brett Reinhardt who got on the phone and I had not seen that it was in the staff report, but it is indeed in both staff reports. And I've had a chance to sort of skim through the well hydrologic, hydrogeologic analysis that we got. It's two pages. It's done by a licensed engineer and someone who I trust personally. But I think this, I just wanted to say to staff that this is exactly the type of documentation that we should be getting to, to that question of the, the connectedness of a well to the, to the water course. I also just want to say that in general, I actually find this project to be really well designed. And I would second what Holly Hollis said a moment ago in some of her comments that I think it makes sense to have water resilience, but that this project is ultimately going to capture and store a lot of, a lot of rainwater. Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or have any questions for the representative Brett?
I do. Yes, thank you, Chair. Just a question on the 2.0 with the six to eight. I'm looking here, harvest per year on that, which is page 32 of the application 15200. How is that going to be done with just mixed light or am I not following how mixed light is used appropriately? Can that be explained a little bit about the use there?
For, I'll give it a shot. I, I think the first fundamental thing we need to grapple with is that the distinction between indoor mixed light and outdoor is not based in or defined on the number of harvests. It's defined based upon the amount of light that's used. The way both ordinances define what the types of cultivation is outdoor is purely sunlight. There is no additional artificial light. Mixed light is a mixture of sunlight with supplemented by other artificial light. Indoor is defined as solely artificial light. And, and so if somebody were to be able to get six turns from mixed light, that, that's not necessarily inconsistent. I've never heard of anybody getting that many turns out, but I suppose it's theoretically possible.
Thank you, Director. Thomas, you have your hand up?
I've seen it. It can happen. It depends on if your starts are bumped up ahead of time and also strain specific. You can even do more than that if you have the right, the short strains, but it's possible.
Anybody else have questions or somebody pose a motion on this thing?
I'm willing to make a motion that I find that the commission has, for, this is for Platinum King Farms LLC. Now, this is just for, well, I guess I should be clear. This is for the first project I'm making this motion. No, or should I make it for both of them?
For both of them.
You can do both at the same time.
Okay, yeah. Then for both of the Platinum King Farms LLC special permit, I, I move that we approve with the recommended conditions. Sorry, I don't have them in front of me.
I'll second that.
Sorry for the clumsy motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Thomas, you were starting to say something. I don't think you were going to second it or?
I was trying to second Brian, but he didn't.
Okay, so any, any other discussion on it? See, none. Laura, I'd ask, roll call vote, please.
Melanie McDavid?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Time, Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes. Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. Wow. Look at that, guys. We got through the whole agenda. We're at item G, adjournment. Is there anything that anybody wants to bring up? The director have anything he wants to talk to us about?
Something that came up tonight, I just want to kind of raise the planning commission's awareness of that when you take actions, adopting the resolutions. Or that's not what staff has said. That is what the planning commission is, is doing. So it reflects your thinking. It reflects the findings that you've made. It reflects how you condition a project. So I just wanted to kind of elevate that in your consciousness that it's important to look at the findings. It's important to think about the conditions and make sure that that reflects what you wanted to reflect as you take actions on projects because that becomes the approval document. And that's the official record. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk about that.
Noah, I see you have your hand up. I don't know if it's about what the director was saying or you had another point.
It's, it's actually not about that. It's another point, but I just, since you said, does anyone have any questions? I just thought, you know, th- these last few meetings have gone rather smoothly in terms of getting through a lot of, a lot of different items. But I also noticed that we haven't had any projects be put on the consent agenda for several meetings. And I just wondered if that was a sort of deliberate decision going forward not to do that or? I mean, is it just that for, we thought we would try it differently for a few meetings and see how it went? Just thought I would ask.
Thank you, Chair. It has been a very deliberate decision. Obviously, there was a couple of projects tonight that probably would normally have qualified for consent calendar. But given the fact that for a few meetings, everything was getting pulled off consent, it seemed counterproductive to try to put things on consent only to have them pulled off. So we have not been putting anything on consent.
Yeah, it seems to be working. I mean, I think, I think we've demonstrated that we can handle some of them fairly quickly and not get caught up in the weeds, not all the time anyway. Thank you.
I have something I'd like to raise. Yeah, I just wanted to let any of the public know, if they're still there, that we had a recent bill, it was Assembly Bill 819, go through that requires all the public agencies to email or and or post notices on websites. So moving away from paper copies of things and being a bit more transparent in terms of having everything be on local agency websites. So something to look forward to.
Yeah, but isn't that the only thing I was, I was thinking the same thing, but Laura said we already currently do that. So Seahull County has been ahead of the curve, I guess.
Well, yes.
Thank you for bringing that up, Melanie. Mike Newman, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I just had a quick question. I remember receiving an email and I wasn't sure how my schedule was going to be, but there's supposed to be some sort of planning convention. I don't know the term in our neck of the woods that is statewide that we have never hosted before. What date was that again?
Printed out.
I can speak to that or Melanie, but it's October 15th and 16th. And we are, we're watching sort of carefully to make sure that we're going to go ahead with it given COVID conditions. So I, I sort of thought I'd wait until we get a little bit closer before I make a pitch to you guys directly, but I do want you to know that that's happening in our neck of the woods. I appreciate you bringing it up. Mike, it's something that Melanie and I have put a lot of time into planning over the past six months or so. And yeah, it's going to be a neat event that will bring together a number of different stakeholders and experts on topics ranging from cannabis to housing to SEQA, to other, other aspects of being a commissioner. And I think you'll find it worthwhile. So I hope that we will be able to go ahead and, and have this conference and it is October 15th and 16th.
And it is called the CCPCA. If anyone would like to look it up, we have a website. And it's pretty up to date. Everything's on there if you'd like to check it out. So that stands for California County Planning Commissioners Association. And all of our fellow commissioners are in it, of course. And yeah, so please do check out the website. We will have options available for members of the public to attend certain sessions as well. So hopefully we'll be able to go forward with it October 14th to 16th. If not, we do plan to have it here face to face at some point.
Great. That was going to be part of my question. It was about public participation as well. So you answered that, that there are some sessions that will be available.
Sure.
And we have a streaming capability as well.
How did the two of you get involved in it? I didn't know anything about it till I saw the flyer come out and I still didn't even know that you guys were heading it up here. So that's great. Thank you.
I, I remember a couple of years ago or a year and a half ago or something when it was out of town and, and we had lamented about not having it here for a bit and sounds like we had a couple of commissioners pick up the banner and run with it. So I'm great, grateful for that. run with it. So I'm great grateful for that.
Yeah, great. All right, anything else? See, nothing else. We will call this meeting of September 2nd adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night. We'll see you. When is our next meeting?
16th, yeah.
We'll see you on the 16th.
Thank you.